7th, 2022, the meeting has been called by petition by majority of members of council for the following specific purposes. Opens. Do you want to read it out?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So the purposes identified with the petition for this special meeting are forensic audit of procurement processes, including Brampton U, legal risk assurance, appointment of the previous integrity commissioner, municipal development corporation, COVID rapid tests purchased by the city, and masks sent to residents. The second item is congratulations to councillor Williams and appointment. And the third item is a closed session item, which is an open session meeting, exception under section 239.2b of the municipal act. Personnel matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees and identifiable individual.
Okay. Under council's meeting rules, no other business can be considered at the special meeting. We will begin the meeting with the city clerk calling the role for attendance at today's meeting.
Members of council, I will call your name. Please indicate your presence for today's meeting. Councillor Dillon.
Present. Councillor Singh. Councillor Singh is present. Councillor Fortini. Thank you, councillor Fortini. Present councillor Williams. Present councillor Maderos.
Here.
Present councillor Bowman.
Present.
Present councillor Palessi. Present councillor Willins.
Present.
Present councillor Visante.
Present.
Present councillor Santos.
Present.
Mayor Brown is present. All 11 members are present.
Mr. Mayor. Okay. We are now at item two, approval of the agenda. With a motion moved by... Who wants to move this? Is there a move? If someone wants to move it? Councillor Williams, seconded by councillor Fortini. Instead of seeking a recorded vote for this item, we're asking, is there anyone opposed to this motion? Otherwise, your vote will count in the form of... Any objections? Hearing none, the motion carries. We're now at item three, declarations of interest under the municipal conflict of interest act. Does any member have a declaration of clear interest under the municipal conflict of interest act for any matter to be considered on today's agenda? Hearing none, the clerk will so note for the meeting minutes. Delegations. Do we have any delegations?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we do. We have delegation 4.1 on the revised agenda from Cody Vacher, and this is in regard to item 5.1 on today's agenda, the forensic audit of procurement processes. So Cody, you have up to five minutes, and just hang on a second, please, while we just... There, you can start whenever you want.
Okay. Thank you very much. Forgive me if I'm out of breath, I just ran in here. Dear Mayor Brown and members of council, I have one thing to say to you. Please break the cycle. I've watched the last three terms of council and the cycle of bad decisions, accusations, investigations, and forensic audits. It's never ending. So please break the cycle. There may very well be financial improprieties, but then it's each of you that are to blame for not putting in place the checks and the balances to stop it. Most, if not all, of the programs and the purchases you wanted to investigate were unanimously voted by council. But every time we get close to an election, some councillors put on an act like there's Sergeant Schultz from the TV show Hogan's Heroes. They knew nothing, they saw nothing, and they heard nothing. So I'm here as a resident to ask you to please break the cycle. Start off by making sound financial decisions, empower staff to do the right thing at the right time, and take the right advice from legal, from the CAO. Because every time council goes on a witch hunt, it's the taxpayers who gets burned at the stake. Please break the cycle. Thank you.
Wait, thank you. Are there any other delegations?
You, Mr. Mayor, there are none. There is just correspondence, but that's on another item, so there's no delegations on this item.
Okay. That takes us to item four... Oh, sorry. Our next item is 4.1, a delegation, sorry, um, no, let's see. 4.2.
Mr. Mayor, if we can just have a motion to receive the delegation, we need to move her in second.
Have a motion to receive the delegation? Councillor Maderos, seconded by councillor Palessi. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. This takes us to correspondence. Do any members have questions or comments about the correspondence?
Certainly.
With Gail Miles and Azad Gayet.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The correspondence was included with the revised agenda when it was published this afternoon and emailed out to council.
Okay. I have a motion moved by councillor Santos, seconded by councillor...
Councillor Visante is on the board.
Oh, councillor Visante is on the board.
Thank you. I wasn't aware of the correspondence. Mr. Clerk, do we have it? Can we display it?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we can. It was emailed out to all members this afternoon when I emailed out about the revised agenda, and the correspondence from Gail Miles is on the screen. And in both cases, just if I could just summarize, I believe both are asking or requesting if council is making appointment to consider them, those two individuals for appointment.
Both of them?
Each of them. Through you, Mr. Mayor, sorry.
So we have here a piece of correspondence where, I guess, prior, previous ward seven and eight, regional councillor is asking for an opportunity to be considered, and I'm just looking here at Azad's correspondence. It looks like they are also asking for an opportunity to serve as councillor in the potentially open seats. Was there any other correspondence that the city received in regards to potentially interested parties?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, there was. There were three pieces of correspondence that were filed, one with the agenda with the special meeting last Tuesday, May 31st, and two that came in during the course of the meeting, and they're all, all three of them are published online with the post-meeting agenda for the May 31st council meeting.
Okay. And so through you, Mr. Chair, I understand that in the city of Toronto, there have been some council vacancies that have developed as well due to persons running in the provincial election. Do we know or do we understand what the city of Toronto has done in order to fill vacancies? And I believe there are also other vacancies that have developed in other municipalities, although I am not exactly aware. Do we have any information in regards to how those were handled or are going to be handled?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. In Toronto's case, I can tell, advise council that there was a process that council established for two vacancies on their council, and the city proceeded with that process that I think culminated in the appointment of two individuals last Wednesday at their council meeting.
Okay. Because we have here a situation where a decision made at a previous council meeting assumed that there may not have been any other interested parties. And I know, I know for a fact, a resident in our wards, and both councillor Santos and I, resident that who we represent, spoke to a member of council who told them that the reason why that appointment was made two weeks ago, or was it last week, excuse me, was because there wasn't really anyone interested in filling this potential opening. And so we go back to what I said before, where we are not following a process here which recognizes potentially other interested parties who would like to serve, notwithstanding that we have selected a name, but we have essentially ignored these other residents, and we're not really following a process that respects them. And so I just want to highlight for members of council today and for members of the public who are watching, that there have been other interested individuals who would like to serve on council for the remainder of the term, and we are essentially, potentially shutting them out unless we do something different today. And so those are my points. And with that stated, I'm happy to move receipt of the correspondence. Thank you.
Councillor Maderos.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, and I do appreciate councillor Visante's sharing with us a resident. I don't know who this resident is, and if you want to bring on record who the resident is that stated that or some conversation, I won't speak to third party.
I'm happy to bring the resident's name if that is needed, but...
If you want to bring it for record, yeah.
Okay. It's Frankus Spadefour, who spoke with councillor Fortini.
It's in the record now. So Frankus Spadefour said to me that he spoke with councillor Fortini, and he said to me that councillor Fortini had explained to him that there were no other interested parties, and that is why we did what we did last week. But that is not the case. Thank you.
Yeah, it's a point of privilege. I didn't say there was no others. I think I said it's nice to have a retiree. I said one councillor did not file his fire notices, the other one had no interest, and I think this person would be fit, as she was a school trustee for 13 years and also had the experience as a regional councillor, and she was pretty active in the community. That's what I said to Frank.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I do appreciate this really, it really amounts much to nothing, because the fact that, you know, one person, you know, I appreciate councillor Visante, your interest in ward seven and eight. We have a councillor who has to work with someone in seven and eight, and that's councillor Fortini. So everyone's, you know, great interest in seven and eight. You know, if there was, you know, mutual respect for a colleague, we would really respect councillor Fortini's opinion, because ultimately, he has to work with that individual. Second, referencing the city of Toronto's elections, it was interesting to see one of the councillors, you know, they went through this interview process, but it was their, her chief of staff who assumed the position. So I guess this speaks to the integrity of the interviews. Nothing states that, you know, one municipality may choose to. Mrs. Sagar did not go through interviews. They appointed someone who was, someone who was there. So, you know, irrespective of whatever happened in terms of the correspondence, it's great to see, receive correspondence, a lot of respect for councillor Miles, and I know she is hosting a golf tournament to raise money with Mayor Brown, and that's a great community initiative. And for Wellspring, I know she's been a big champion, so I appreciate her advocacy on that. And Azad is someone who's passionate about Brampton, so it's great that we have interested parties. The fact that, you know, folks are interested, that's great. There's a process that we've already gone through. I'm satisfied that councillor Fortini is eventually the one most impacted. So it is curious to see this interest of other councillors in ward seven and eight. You know, essentially, I don't think they would appreciate if we showed keen interest in their wards and whatever, whoever they're running with, because I know there's, during election, there'll be a lot of people interested in running in our wards. So with that said, I'm happy to second to receive the correspondence. It's great, or I see already people are moving it. It's great to see councillor Miles express that interest and congratulated our good friend here, councillor Williams, and it's great to see Azad has provided his correspondence as well. Thank you.
Councillor Visante.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you councillor Maderos. I just don't know if we indeed did follow a process when we moved last week, because we had concerns raised by both the clerk and the city solicitor, that as per the municipal act, we may not have precisely followed what the municipal act requires of municipalities in terms of the sequence of events that must take place before an appointment is made. And so that opens a lot of questions, but also speaks to the fact that there was no process. There was a declaration of council, which passed without question, but I'm not sure we actually did follow a process that was accepted by the city of Brampton, or ever, I believe it was a clerk who mentioned, in no other municipality before had something like that ever been done. So I would just point that out. Thank you.
So councillor Santos, followed by councillor Maderos, councillor, followed by councillor Dillon. Is that correct, the clerk?
Thank you so much, and I echo the comments from councillor Visante as well. I see that former councillor of ward seven, eight, who used to represent seven, eight, which is the seat that is at some point going to be declared vacant. It is not vacant right now. I see that the councillor from seven, eight is still sitting here. That being said, I don't think a process was followed. We had residents who are coming back today and other residents submitting correspondence saying, we didn't really know about this meeting. This is not transparent. This meeting was called within 24 hours, and the public had actually no say in the process. The residents who represent wards, who live in ward seven, eight, had no say in the process. And while councillor Fortini says that this is the person that he has to work with, the rest of council has to work with whomever ends up being appointed or not into that seat. This council has to sit with that person. And I can say that I would much prefer seeing probably Gail Miles, who has the experience and the knowledge from the previous term in ward seven, eight, in that role. And also, I have to say, that the person that is being suggested has publicly, has publicly slandered members around this table before, before the meeting today. And we have records of that on Facebook, on social media, on Twitter. And so why would we be supportive of somebody who has spread misinformation and various other things on social media to a point where my residents have shared concerns? So when it comes to looking at Gail Miles's letter, of course, I would prefer that. It makes far more sense for the former retired seven, eight councillor to be sitting in that chair than someone that was preemptively selected through counter advice from the city solicitor and the clerk, preemptively selected by six councillors, six councillors, one, one of whom hasn't even declared the seat vacant or resigned yet from their seat. And so clearly, again, as I said in the last meeting, there is a very strong effort for a certain group of six councillors to maintain control over this council. And to the delegations point from Cody Vacher, who delegated earlier, this is an ongoing thing that happens during silly election season. Oh, no, don't say no. You know it's true. And, and, and to be very honest with you, I do believe that the residents see the games that are being played, 100% confident in that. And so I could publicly show up, I could, I could read on Facebook and then get screen grabs of the comments that were made on social media, on Facebook, et cetera, that were made by the suggested person who's coming forward, that you guys want to bring forward, the six specific councillors want to bring forward preemptively to this council table. And so maybe councillor Fortini can work with that person, but certainly councillor Visante and I, and probably the mayor, would have issues with that. And I want to put that on the public record.
So just with the clerk, I know we have a lot of items today that might get heated. Are we, normally I don't abide by the speaking two times. What is the normal protocol for a special council meeting?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, this is a special council meeting, so it follows the council rules, and the council rules are for any one item, a member is entitled to speak twice, unless council wishes to allow the member to speak again. So I am keeping track of the number of times a member speak, but they are entitled to speak twice. I'd also just wish to point out that we're only on item 4.2, which is just two pieces of correspondence for receipt. It sounds like this debate is gravitating into item 5.2, which is the congratulations to councillor Williams and appointment. So I would just advise, perhaps if council wishes to continue this debate, they consider this with 5.2, so there is not a re-debate later on in the meeting, in the effort to have an efficient and effective meeting.
Look into council?
That's fine, but I'm just wondering about the speaker.
Congratulations. Depending on a heated debate over congratulations or a good news story.
So we can finish, we can finish these speakers and after bring up the other.
Okay. So we'll, we'll finish the speakers. I want to say to council, for the remainder of the council meeting, normally, we're very loose with the two-person rule, but I think if today's going to be an animated discussion, then we will try to ask members of council, keep an eye if you've spoken twice, and let's be respectful of the council rules. Councillor Maderos, followed by councillor Dillon.
At risk of digressing and speaking regarding the reputation of a former councillor who's expressed her opinion, which a lot of her opinion that many members of council, including myself, would share a lot of the aspects, the way that it was presented, it's up to her style, but, you know, I would look towards my colleagues at one in five who hired someone who has systematically attacked members of council for the last several years, who systematically belongs to a media outlet, who's targeted individuals and spread false narratives. But I think that seems to be okay for the councillors' wards one and five, because of course, you know, they wouldn't do that, because, you know, they now report to you, so they wouldn't get into that. So that's a digression. And second, you know, listen, to bring someone in to come and delegate, we all know what's going on here. We all know who plays the game. We all know how you guys meet together and put these things up and bring on the show. So we're not going to get into that. We're going to get into the fact that, you know, right now, in terms of the correspondence, the correspondence, a bunch of councillors who are working on a campaign, and a bunch of them work together. So individuals come and raise issues, and we know how that, that happens. Individuals, one in five, one in five. So getting to some of the comments, to the city clerk, do we have a process on how we appoint someone?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The municipal act says that council shall appoint under certain conditions, but there is no process defined. So it's left to every municipality to decide their process. Some municipalities predefine processes, other municipalities do not, and will deal with it at the time of which it may arise.
Thank you very much. So this magic process that colleagues keep talking about doesn't exist. So it's, it's, it's a process they would like to see, but it doesn't exist. We don't have this process. We have a process, which is, you know, council's resolution is binding, council has already spoken on the issue. We, you know, like it or not, we can complain about it, you can publish letters, you can do what you want, but there isn't a process. So to try to trick residents, or for those on TV, there isn't a process on how you appoint. You had someone who came two weeks ago during that meeting, said, don't appoint nobody. But the municipal act said, you have to appoint someone, but please don't appoint nobody. And then today, we're saying, okay, appoint someone, but not this person, because this person said some stuff and we don't like what it is. But it's okay for you to hire whoever you want, who's attacked this council and is providing false narratives. But essentially, but essentially, but essentially, it's okay, you know, on one end, to get someone who was a media outlet, who received funding from the city, on top of that, who received funding from the city on a process, and then now works for the same individuals who now have worries and concerns about an individual, 29 years' experience, who's been active, still sits on boards, and someone that we respect, that will come in and do the job. But ultimately, I appreciate that you may not consider councillor Fortini, or may not respect his authority, you may not consider councillor Williams, who was rightfully elected for seven and eight. She has every right to determine who her predecessor, who was going to replace her. They have every right. But it seems that certain councillors seem to be, that they feel that they have some absolute influence, that they must influence who seven and eight must have, because, oh, I don't work good with them. Oh, they've, 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 you know, attacked my integrity. Oh, our decision-making wasn't right. You know, that's not what's going on here. So if it was another person, nobody would have an issue. But because it's the individual person in question, that becomes the issue. And, you know, at the end of the day, we have councillor Fortini who has to work with someone, we have councillor Williams who made the selection, they have every right to choose who they want, as you have every right, if something was to happen and one in five becomes vacant, or whoever you want, you have every right to choose who you want. So anyways, I will wait, I know we have other, we will bring the item forward, but I do, again, want to thank the correspondence, a lot of respect for both individuals, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Councillor Fortini.
Yeah, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I thank you. Councillor Maderos said everything, and he's absolutely right when he had someone from the media being hired and being attacking and doing all sudden a media release, how we broke rules. And, you know, we, as a council as a whole, make a decision, and all of a sudden, media releases go out. At the end of the day, it's my area. Maybe, you know what I should do, Mr. Clerk, I should make an appointment, run one in five tomorrow morning and go register, and maybe this way, you know, it'll be a lot better for them to come in your area. Or maybe you come and run in my area and select who you want. I have no issue winning or losing. But, you know, at the end of the day, I have to work with a person. Yes, you, we all do, but, you know, councillor Miles never sent anything in, she knew about the special council meeting, and all of a sudden, now people are contacting people at the end. I got to work with the person, and I think her councillor, that we selected, Laimore, she was a school trustee there for 13 years, and also she was a regional councillor for many years. So I have to work with that person, councillor Williams, we discussed it, she was fine with it, so that's a person we'd like to thank, and we'd like to thank councillor Williams who graduated.
There's no other speakers? So we need a motion to...
Councillor Santos and councillor Visante.
Okay. Councillor Santos and who?
Councillor Visante.
Visante? We've instructed. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We've received the correspondence. This takes us to item 5.1. The forensic audit of procurement processes, including Brampton U, legal risk assessment, appointment of previous integrity commissioner, municipal development corporation, COVID rapid test purchased by the city of Brampton, and mask sent to residents. Do any members have any questions or comments? Councillor Bowman.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Two things, actually. Brampton U is listed here on this list, but in our meeting with CAO Morrison this afternoon, apparently, it's already being covered. Can you talk to that, chief?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We met with the councillors that are on the steering committee. We looked at the scope provided by Froschen Associates. So the scope is within what we consider tolerable limits, the value of the audit's within tolerable limits, and we're prepared to proceed forward. I can give you more details, since it is a, still a contract between, or a potential contract between Frosch and ourselves, between the company and ourselves. I prefer to go in camera and give you the details, as they are confidential. But, but as now, we're, we have all the details that we require, and we find that they are But, but as now, we're, we have all the details that we require, and we find that they are, they are acceptable.
Okay, well, to be sure that we can remove Brampton U from this list, I would like to go in camera and get the, get the scope given to us. That way we can eliminate it, we don't need to worry about it. And I believe, Samir, is it, Mr. Solicitor?
Through the Chair, I think we can go into closed session for the exception for negotiations, as I believe we're still in the process of entering into a contract with this party.
Okay. I'd like to move that we go in session in camera for that, so that we can eliminate that. If, if it's not needed, let's eliminate it. Yep. Then we can eliminate it.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair, we're just gonna...
You want to congratulate councillor Williams now? Whatever councillor prefers.
So move this item to the end? Move, okay, move to go in camera, Chief? Thank you.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, then there is a motion to move into closed session. Are we moving just in camera to deal with this item, which is item K, the exception, or also to deal with item 7.1?
Just 5.1, whatever it is, Peter.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, then the motion will require a second, it's moved by councillor Bowman, seconded by councillor Paleshi, that council move into closed session in regard to the discussion on item 5.1.
He asked, he said no.
Just do 5.1, come back.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, the motion then would be moved by councillor Bowman, seconded by councillor Paleshi, to move into closed session in regard to item 5.1 on the special meeting agenda, as it relates to an open meeting exception under section 239, 2K of the municipal act, and that is a position plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board. Just need to take a vote on that, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, members of council require a minimum 15 minutes, please.
We're item, back from in camera, 5.1, with a motion to adopt from in camera.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, just to report out from in camera, council moved into closed session to deal with an open meeting exception under section 239, 2K of the municipal act, a position plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board. During closed session, information was received in regard to item 5.1 in closed session, and was considered, and direction was given to staff. So that is the report out from closed session. So, Mr. Mayor, the council is still in the middle of its debate on item 5.1 on the forensic audit of procurement processes, if there's further debate.
Moved by councillor Bowman, I believe, seconded by councillor Paleshi.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, unless there is any other debate or, or a motion for public, there is no further, there's no requirement for a motion on this item.
Okay. Next item, which is item 5.2?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and just before we go to 5.2, just to point out, in the revised agenda, there was the correspondence from Azad Goyet, and in Azad's correspondence, he did request to delegate to council on this item, 5.2. My apologies, I overlooked that in his subject line, so it is an item that is entitled to be, people to come forward to delegate. So I would, my advice would be, if council wishes to receive Azad's delegation on this item, they can before council debates the item.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Let me start. Brampton first. Resident first. Politics behind. Council. Is it time to work for residents? Enough is enough. No polarization, please. No polarization, please. Need a break. Enough is enough. How far, how our representative can sleep during the night when we are behind? Brampton first. We are the ignored ninth-largest city of Canada without a full flag university, fair share in healthcare, hospitals, infrastructure fundings, et cetera. Brampton first. We are equal taxpayer. Brampton first. We are the fourth-largest city in Ontario. Brampton first. Is the position for Sherman William, councillor Sherman William is vacant? I say not yet. If not, let the councillor resign first, then talk and start the process. If the process is started, councillor, councillor Sherman resigned, and then I say, "I'm the best candidate," and you know why. You know my record. You all know my voice and passion for Brampton. My heart blinks for Brampton. I don't agree that councillor Sherman has right to appoint someone of her choice. No. It's a, it's a by democracy, by the people, not by the choice. Let's work for residents and their best interest only. Leave politics behind, choose someone who is passionate just for Brampton, and it's me only. You know why? I have the record. My heart blink for Brampton. Thank you so much. Brampton first, resident first. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I do need a motion to receive the delegation. Motion moved by councillor Fortini, seconded by councillor Vicente, to receive the delegation. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. This takes us to item 5.2, an item regarding congratulations to councillor Williams and appointment. Councillor Maderos.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and certainly, first of all, I would like to, I added this item, I just thought that this would, an appropriate way to recognize the success of councillor Williams, and notwithstanding your success, it's really, it's really from, I think, a council strategically, to have someone who understands municipal issues, who understands the indebtedness and challenges that we have on a lot of policy areas, our priorities, and it's great to see that you're going to be part of the team, which I must say, I was impressed during the outreach that we had as part of the municipality, and, you know, the, I guess the government, the ruling party, all four of their members came to City Hall. So I want to, and certainly, I think it's better come from the mayor, but I just wanted to congratulate you, and certainly, I also take this opportunity to welcome former councillor Moore, who I look forward to working with you. And, you know, history tells us over previous term of council, we did not see eye to eye on many issues, but never did I question your passion and your love for the city, and I certainly look forward to, you know, the ability to move some of the items forward, and your experience, and also your clarity on many of these items, especially at a critical time where we're going to be working with our intergovernmental partners. So I think your much-added experience, your voice, to help advocate for the city of Brampton, and I look forward to working with you as a colleague. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Fortini.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and just sad to see councillor Williams go. You know, we started off not in good terms, but the last eight, nine months, you know, I kind of get tears in my eyes now that you're leaving, and, you know, I wish you all the best, and, you know, in one way, you have the experience where you seen here to go there, and I really feel that you'll do, you'll stand up for Brampton and do good things there, and then I'll be seeing Elaine Moore taking your spot, and I'll be working with her, so I wish you all the best. Thank you.
Okay, next up is councillor Dylan.
Yeah, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I just want to just congratulate councillor Williams on moving on to the provincial parliament. I think, you know, she'll be a strong voice there. She did great work in Brampton Centre, no, wait, Board Seven and Eight. You're going on to, yeah, yeah, it's the Centre of Brampton, you're going on to Brampton Centre. And I think this term of council, you know, the makeup of council was very diverse, and, you know, speaking to the black community in particular, my conversations with them, how proud they were to have you as a voice, you know, every different community has different needs and different issues, and you really stood up for them, not just them. A lot of issues with many different communities, all communities, and so I thought that was great that you did so much work, and, you know, you'll be going on to provincial parliament, and, you know, we wish you the best. And to Elaine Moore, we welcome you. As councillor Maderos had mentioned, we may not have seen eye to eye previous term of council, but, you know, that's what, I guess, being human is about, is moving forward, having a dialogue and trying to reach consensus, and, you know, sometimes you don't see eye to eye on one thing, but you find ways to work together, because at the end of the day, we're doing this for the residents of Brampton, and so I look forward to working with you, and, you know, your 29 years of knowledge of being an elected official in Brampton will, will be very valuable to this council. So thank you to councillor Williams, and welcome to councillor Moore.
Okay, next up is councillor Singh.
Yeah, I just want to congratulate MPP councillor Williams on your victory. You ran a very strong campaign, you know, we have some mutual people who helped, and, you know, well-deserved. It'd be good to have you at Queens Park to advocate on behalf of Brampton, and wish you nothing but the best. Thank you.
Councillor Bowman.
Thank you very much, through you, Mr. Chair, congratulations, Miss new MP. If you, MP, if you, MPP, sorry. I thought I had a stutter. If, when you came to me, I think you might remember, you said you were going to run after I saw someone in your office chatting with you, and I said, "You're going to blow them away." You did, congratulations. Good for you.
Councillor Williams.
Thank you, through you, Mayor, congratulations Charmaine, or councillor Williams, or MPP Williams, whatever you like to be called now, but I reached out to you the night of the campaign, and I'm going to be firm too, I want you to be working with us here at City Council on the climate change issues and moving that forward. I've talked to Graham already about it, so we want you to be the advocate at City Hall for what we need and desperately need in Brampton, the healthcare and the climate chase crisis addressed, so I know you said you would, but we'll be holding you accountable, and I'll be down at Queens Park shaking you up if you don't, so congratulations again. It's great to see you moving on, it's great. Going to miss you, though.
Well, thank you councillor Williams for not running as well, I know the Green Leader was trying to recruit you, so. Can't afford to lose two councillors. Councillor Paleshi.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Charmaine, through the wall, the plastic guns that we were going to get a, a big bulldozer roller to steam over, the good and the bad, it was an honor serving with you on this council. It was, you, you absolutely made this council exciting. You're one of the strongest women that I've ever met in my life, and I can only ask that my girls are just like you one day. You're a fantastic person. Yes, I can do whatever I want, you're leaving. You're a fantastic person and a great human being. You should be a proud mother and MPP-elect. Congratulations, Charmaine. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Charmaine, congratulations on your well-deserved win in Brampton Centre. I had the opportunity to call some of the other MPPs, but I want to just publicly congratulate you here and say that as the region appeals representative at EMO, and I know that we have EMO happening this summer in August, and I continue to encourage every member of council to attend, we look forward to pitching the Brampton story to you and to your fellow MPPs and the ministers at the province. Nobody there knows the files here better than you, right? And so we will be coming, looking for your support on all of our priorities. So we're looking forward to that, and congratulations.
Councillor Santos.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor, congratulations councillor Williams, MPP-elect Williams. You know, like councillor Paleshi had shared earlier, you and I particularly haven't shared a lot of our agreed on many different things, everything from the build a wall during, around the GTA to keep out cannabis, to rolling over plastic guns, those are different things that we two didn't agree on, but I think one thing is certain at this table, and that is we are and share a common ground as being the two only women of color sitting at this table, and also within the same age group as well. And that being said, both you and I at the city of Brampton, as women of color, have played an important role and continue to play an important role in being role models for the next generation of young women who want to sit at the same table, as councillor Paleshi said, being a role model for his daughters. And so while I was supporting my friend Sarah Singh, because she's my friend, congratulations on a very successful campaign and win, and we will be knocking on your door absolutely, regularly, as our MPP, you're now my MPP in Brampton Centre, to make sure that the province delivers exactly everything that they said that they would deliver. And first being first shovels in the ground, not waiting for an election, but shovels in the ground to build the hospital in particular. So congratulations to you. You, you'll be hearing from us regularly, I'm sure.
So before we give the last word to councillor Williams, I just want to echo the comments and say, congratulations. It is a privilege and an honor to serve in the legislature, and I know you're going to expand your voice. You had a larger voice than was typical for a city councillor on a number of issues, and I believe that you can do the same as an MPP to the benefit of the city of Brampton. And I know there's a number of issues that you're passionate about, that will serve the best interest of Brampton, and we wish you well on your success, and because your success for the issues that you will lobby on behalf of, the city of Brampton, will be our city's success. And so I look forward to seeing you at EMO, as, as, as we lobby you on our, on our agenda, and once again, on behalf of our city council, congratulations.
That's a lot to take in. But I'm deeply, I'm deeply touched by all of the words that were said here today, and by the outpouring of support that I received throughout the campaign and after the campaign. This, I said before, this campaign wasn't won just by me, it was won by a team, a group of people, and by the residents, who want to see strong voices come forward for the city of Brampton. And I, I'm, yes, I know the portfolios, I know the files, and I often asked when I was being... And I often asked, when I was being interviewed and asked if I wanted to be the candidate, I'm like, "Do you know what you're getting? Have you seen?" I was on council. I will speak up when I feel compelled to. I will do my homework and look into issues in the background and make decisions thoughtfully. And I'm very honored that they still said yes despite everything that we went through in our first two years. I really do appreciate all of the struggles and the battles that we've had on this council, all of the pushback, even from Counsel Fertini. I do appreciate all of it because I do believe that what doesn't kill you makes you stronger. And everything I've gone through politically in this journey, and I came from no experience politically. I came from mental health services and therapeutic environments where people talked about their feelings and worked through their issues in very, you know, healthy ways. But these experiences that I've had on council has brought me to feeling confident and has prepared me. And I appreciate all of it. And, yeah, but now I know there's a lot of work to be done next. I know Brampton was neglected for quite a significant amount of time. The planning for the population growth wasn't there. And now we have to invest in our infrastructure. We have to build our hospitals. We have to build homes that are affordable for our residents. So I'm ready to take this on and especially work on our mental health of our people. After a pandemic, we're all hurting, even those who feel that they are strong and we got through it. We've been impacted. And so we need to take care of each other. But I know that you guys are in good hands. And I know that this council is, at the end of the day, we're human beings, right? And we have to really just respect that. And I'm going to miss being here. I am. I really am. So I thank you all so much for everything. And, but I'm not going anywhere. I'll still be here.
Okay, so we have no more speakers to the clerk. Can we split the motion to the congratulations and appointment separately?
So through you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a motion.
Okay.
Okay. No motion?
There's no motion.
Okay. Okay, no motion. That takes us to public question period?
How do I take questions?
Oh, closed session.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Mayor. So normally in our agenda is we have public question period before we go into closed session.
Okay, so will I be able to go to the mic to talk?
Yes.
When?
Now. So just as you're coming to the mic, just a reminder that you're entitled to ask questions about decisions that counsel has made at this meeting. And if you could please just state your name for the record, please.
My name is Yvonne Squires. I've been here several times. I haven't been here for a while. I am a little disappointed with this meeting today. I see a lot of dissension, which we had before, but was resolved among each other and with people like me coming to the mic. And don't forget that you work for us. We don't work for you. You are a little angry. Why? And you cannot attack any citizen of Brampton because they pay your salary. You can discuss it in a decent, respectful manner. And this is what I used to see here. I didn't see it today. And you do not have the authority to say who sit in what seat. It's the people who vote and put the people here. And if you're angry with someone that is being appointed to a position, it's none of your business to attack or to try to prevent that person. The most qualified, the most experienced person should be given the position if it's not an elected position by the citizens of Brampton. And I am a citizen of Brampton. And I will be watching closely because you all work for us. We pay your salary. I'm a very fair person, but I don't put up with nonsense. And if you sitting here, you should respect. And whoever you putting in that position must be experienced and qualified because most of the people that are elected are not qualified for the position. They're elected because they have some friend. And some people don't get the position because you're angry with them. That is not your prerogative. So when you come and sit on this board, you remember who you work for. You don't work for the mayor. You don't work for your coworkers. You work for us. I haven't been here for a while, but people who has been here knows me. I'm a very fair person. You're not dealing with an idiot. Thank you.
Thank you, Yvonne. That takes us back to closed session? That takes us to closed session?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes. We are now at item 7.1, closed session. So there's only one item remaining for closed session, item 7.1, an open meeting exception under section 239-2B of the Municipal Act, personnel matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees and identifiable individuals. So we will require a mover and a seconder to move into closed session.
Seconder? Counsel Williams? Okay, anyone opposed? And to the city clerk, how long would you require?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, 10 minutes, please.
It is 5:58. Meet at 6:08. In the continuing interest of transparency and open government, I will report in public session any outcomes from today's closed session business. As a result of our closed session today, I wish to report the following. 7.1, open session meeting, exception 239-2B of the Municipal Act, personal matters about a identified individual including municipal or local board employees and identified individual, and action was taken.
And through you, yes, through you, Mr. Mayor, this item was considered enclosed. Information was received and direction was given.
Okay, that takes us to confirming bylaw. I have a motion moved by Counsel Maderos, seconded by Counsel Bowman to approve the confirming bylaw to confirm the proceedings and decisions from this meeting. Is there anyone opposed to this motion? Otherwise, your vote will count in affirmative. Hearing none, motion carries. Our last item of business is item 9, adjournment. Counsel's next scheduled meet Wednesday, June 5, 2022, at 9:30 a.m. for regular meeting. I have a motion moved by Counsel Vesante, seconded by Counsel Williams, to adjourn today's meeting. Is there anyone opposed to this motion? Otherwise, your vote will count in affirmative. Thank you. There are no objections. The motion carries. The meeting is adjourned.